We start. Okay, so it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. This is Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. And today is March 1st, 2021. Doring, may we have a roll call, please?
President who?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Brooke?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Dick?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Keenanis? Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Shook?
I'm here.
Commissioner K. Evans?
I'm here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
And Commissioner Whitehurst?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doring.
Uh huh.
So next item is communications. Commissioners, do you have any meetings or communications since last meeting? Vice President Jackson, please go ahead.
Yep, I just wanted to give a quick update. The River Terrace 2.0 CAC met again since our last meeting. I just wanted to mention that we've more or less settled on a an overall concept. If you'll, if anyone remembers back, there were kind of three competing main concepts and we settled on a focus on a Main Street concept, but with a large commercial area along Shoals Ferry. And with some connections down into the new King City Town Center that's being developed. There is a virtual open house, I believe, available through the city website, open through March 7th. So if anyone wants to take a look and give some feedback, that'd be great.
Thank you. Commissioner Watson, please go ahead.
Hi, there was a transportation advisory committee meeting on February 8th. And it was primarily focused on steps forward in terms of sidewalks and and creating bikeable routes based on from schools and and other essential type services throughout the city and moving forward with that. It was also the closing of the comment period for public comments on future transportation need. That was February 17th when that closed.
All right. Thank you. All right, so let's move on to consideration of minutes. Do we have anybody having any comments? Issues or additions, deletions? No, I'm not hearing anything, so it's considered approved and I will sign it and sign it and send it to you, Doring.
Great, thank you.
All right. So let's start the public, the public hearing. So the public hearing is on Weston Oaks Plan Development File Number PDR And the applicant, which is a CTH Investments LLC, is proposing a seventeen lot subdivision slash plan development for single detached house on 1.77 acres of land. So before we get into the hearing, I have some required statement that I need to read. The applicable substantive criteria are those listed on page two of the staff report, available on the city's website. If you go to the public hearing website, there's a link for staff report. The second point is testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria listed on page two of the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation they are believed to apply to the decision. Number three, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Here's, here are some procedure items. Commissioners, do, does any of you wish to abstain or declare a conflict of interest? I hear and see none. Kealan, do we have anybody calling in at this point?
There are no callers currently.
Okay, so I guess nobody in the audience wished to challenge the member of the planning commission for bias or conflict of interest. Next point is ex parte contact. Commissioners, does any commissioners wish to report any ex parte contacts regarding this case? I see, I see and hear none. Has any commissioners visited the site of the proposal? If you have, please raise your virtual hand. So I see Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Whitehurst, Alternative Commissioner Dick, Commissioner Watson, Alternative Commissioner Miranda. Anybody else? No, okay. Doring, did you get all that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess nobody in the audience wished to challenge the jurisdiction, the commission. So here's the description of the hearing process. First, the staff will give their staff report, then the applicant will make their presentation. After that, we will take public testimony. And if any public, if anybody wants to give a public testimony, please call in right now at between 7:15 and 7:30 at 503-966-4101. And once the public testimony is done, the applicants or the staff will have an opportunity to respond to anybody who is opposed to the proposal. So now let's get to the staff report. I would like to introduce staff member, Associate Planner Monica Belladu, to give the staff report. The floor is yours, Monica. You're still unmuted, Monica. There we go.
Good evening, President Who and Commissioners. My name is Monica Belladu and I am Associate Planner here at the city. And the item before you tonight, number five, is the Weston Oaks Plan Development. And the department is before you today recommending approval of this project. So this first slide shows you the concept plan and the detailed plan that is up for consideration tonight. And the project is located on Southwest 95th, just south of Greenberg Road. And a quick summary of the project, the applicant proposes a seventeen basically unit detached development located on roughly 1.7 acres. And the lots are going to range from about 2,200 square feet to 4,400 square feet and an average of 3,000 square foot lots. And the project is proposing amenities such as some, you can see in this picture, the frontage off of 95th, you're going to have these large Oregon white oaks and you'll have kind of a park, park-like setting. And it's going to feel large because it's also going to have the water quality facility there. So those are some of the amenities that we see with this plan development. And in return, as part of the plan development criteria, the applicant has requested some adjustments to the minimum lot size. And we have the minimum lot width, the front yard setbacks, the side yard setbacks, and those are all located on page 14. So you can get a whole list of what the zone allows compared to the adjustments that are being requested as part of the plan development. So those also include the, the side yard setback, as I said, there's a 30% increase as well in the density. And then a little small change to the, a few of the lots have for the width of the garages, we're also altering those. So back to the density, we did receive a late comment from a neighbor regarding kind of focusing on density. So I want to kind of put your attention to page 30 of the staff report that does talk about the density calculation and how that was made. And following our code, you, we basically take the entire lot area and then we minus out the proposed private streets. And then using that net area, we then can calculate kind of the maximum density that's allowed and the minimum density that's allowed using the R7 zone that this project is located in. And because this project is proposing a plan development, they get the benefit of having a 30% increase to that maximum density. So the, this project did take advantage of that. So they are within the correct allowed range of density using the plan development criteria standards there. So just wanted to make sure we all understood that part. And let's keep moving on. So our staff recommendation today is first in favor of the proposed concept map. And then the second would be in favor of the proposed detailed plan development and subdivision. So staff has thoroughly reviewed the proposed plans. It does recommend approval subject to the conditions within the staff report. So that concludes my presentation. The applicant is also here to answer any questions and staff is available to answer any questions as well. And I believe we have a presentation from the applicant.
That's right. Thank you, Monica. And before we go to the applicant, let me ask if the commissioners have any questions for you. Commissioners, do you have? Okay, I see Commissioner, Alternative Commissioner Dick, please go ahead with your question.
Hi, I was wondering, what is the distance, because it was hard to read on, on the screen, the distance between the homes?
So on page three, yeah, this is Monica. So in our staff report, I referenced page 14 and then we have it located, I think, on page 29 as well. They have the proposed setbacks. So the interior side yard setbacks will be three feet. So you'd have three feet on either side. So the houses would roughly be at least six feet. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jackson, please go ahead.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So one was one of the, one of the public benefits touted is the pedestrian connection to the east of the development that goes through Greenberg Oaks. I was just curious if there, I didn't notice if there was some sort of easement needed for public access across Greenberg Oaks or something to that effect.
So we did ensure that the location of it matched right up with an existing sidewalk area of that adjacent property. And we did ensure the applicant did coordinate with that adjacent neighbor to ensure that that was a good location for that connection there. So they can speak towards, speak if, if there was anything else from the adjacent neighbor, but as I understand it, it will connect right through and that there is an easement, so it will be open to the public to use that.
Okay, thank you. My next question was regarding the, the overhead lines along 95th, which I understand are not going to be put underground. So I'm, when I, I'm trying to remember when I travel along 95th. I believe most of the utility lines are on the west side. And there was like one line overhead on the east side of the street along where this development would be. Is, is the reason those, those wouldn't be undergrounded is because none of the utility poles are along that frontage? Or what, what determines whether or not those get undergrounded? I, I guess the, the motivation behind my question is under what conditions would those ever be undergrounded?
Is Jeremy with us tonight or Martin here?
I am with you.
All right.
Hey, everyone. Jeremy Tamargo, Principal Engineer for Development. So that would be assessed at the time of the PFI submitted for the construction permits. Generally, undergrounding is required unless there is a reason not to require it. So in this case, that we have received the construction setback from the applicant's arborist in terms of trying to save those trees there along the frontage of the property. So we would assess whether or not to, to underground the utilities at the time that we get the construction documents. So, so we're going to do all we can to try to save those trees, which is kind of why you see the curb tight sidewalk design. So did that answer your question?
Yes, I think it did. Thank you. I have possibly another related question you might be able to chime in on. So the report said that the provision to stub a street is precluded by the pre-existing development surrounding the site. It seems like sometimes we, we plan for stub streets and sometimes we don't. And I wasn't totally clear under what conditions we do or don't.
Sure. And so in this case, we have to the east, there is the apartment complex that's already been built out. So in this case, because of the existing development, that's why we don't have a stub to connect further to the east because it's already been developed in this case. So.
Is it like, is it the age of the development? Because sometimes we, we plan stub street, or seems like we have stub streets that, about, developed land, but for future redevelopment. And sometimes we don't. And I just wasn't sure how, how we decide which is which.
So in this case, I'm not sure that there's really a, a number and the planning department can correct me if I'm wrong in terms of the age of the development, but it's, it's really based on kind of the existing conditions. And if, you know, there's a likelihood of redevelopment, I guess, I would say. And in this case, because of the existing apartment complex, it's unlikely that that would be re, redeveloped. So that's why you're seeing the pedestrian connection rather than a street stub.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have two questions. Hopefully they are quick. First is terminology. The report said cul-de-sac is not proposed. So right now, what we have is not called, is not, I guess it's not called cul-de-sac, it's a hammer, hammer end, or is that correct? Okay. So what's the difference? What, what is the cul-de-sac officially versus what we have now?
The street would terminate in a large bulb. And that would be, and there's certain design that it would have to meet, but that would ultimately be considered a cul-de-sac design.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is Jeremy. So a cul-de-sac looks like kind of a circular bulb design, whereas the hammerhead kind of looks like the T, like a hammerhead shark, if you could picture that type of design. So they're just turnarounds for fire trucks, emergency access, different designs serving the same purpose.
Okay, thank you. And one more question. So in approval condition number three, it says the CCNR must address, must have language to address the maintenance of tracks and private access. So I just want to confirm that maintenance of track include the maintenance of the water runoff facility.
So the way the city does it for ponds is that it's going to be owned by the HOA. Then, so there's a maintenance agreement placed over the facility. And then depending if it's a public or private pond, then either the HOA or the city maintains it depending if it's private or public.
So in this case, it will be private?
Correct, yes. It's a privately owned and maintained facility.
So the CCNR will have to address the maintenance. Okay. All right, I, I just want to make sure that that's one of the conditions. So thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any more questions for the staff at this point? Okay, I see none. So at this time, I will invite the applicants to present your case. Please state your name and title and please limit your presentation to 20 minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted and, and on screen. So my name is Wayne Hayson. I'm from Pioneer Design Group. I'm Planning Manager at Pioneer Design Group. My last name is H A Y S O N. And my address is 9020 Southwest Washington Square Road, Portland, Oregon 97223. We are representing the applicant CTH Investments. We have with us tonight Matt Wellner from CTH Investments, who is available for questions. And he can introduce himself into the record if, if need be. We also have Jeff Mihalko and Matt Sprague from Pioneer Design Group. So we have people available to answer your planning or engineering questions. And I also understand Todd Prager, the arborist for the site, is also listening in and can respond to questions if you do have questions regarding the, the tree removal or preservation, I should say, on the site. I do have a, a brief presentation for you tonight. We, we do appreciate the work that staff has done on this application. Obviously, plan developments are a little bit different to a regular application. It does take a lot of communication and collaboration between the applicant and staff to make sure that what we're providing is, is going to be beneficial for the city and meet city's requirements. And so we do appreciate the communication and effort that staff have put into the application with us on this. Monica did a good job in summarizing the application, so I don't want to go over it in too much, too much detail. And I'm sure you've got piles of paperwork there as well, but I do have a few slides to share with you. So let me just bring that up. Okay, so as you know, the, the application is Weston Oaks, a seventeen lot plan development for single family detached dwellings. As you can see on the preliminary plat, the application is, this is the detailed concept, the detailed plan, I guess. And we are, as Monica mentioned, submitting both the concept plan and detailed plan for approval. Lot sizes, we have some varying lot sizes within the development from that 2,200 square feet up to a little over 4,400 square feet with an average of, of around 3,200 square feet. So we do think that the application provides a good range of, of lot sizes. We are providing frontage improvements along the frontage on Southwest 95th Avenue, including curb, gutter, pavement improvements and sidewalk. And I will note that there are a number of underground utilities on 95th Avenue, which, from which we need to separate other utilities from, which does provide difficulties in terms of adding that underground utility that does run along the front there in terms of also preserving those oak trees that are located within tractee. And also, we are doing frontage improvements along the front of parcel one on the north there. And there is also a white oak tree on, on that parcel, which we are trying to avoid in order to preserve hence the need for the curb tight sidewalks and the, the, the difficulty in placing that utility underground. So the site is accessed via a private street from Southwest 96th Avenue. That private street is going to have a 26-foot width with multiple curbs and curb tight sidewalk and terminate with that hammerhead turnaround. There will be parking available on one side of the east-west portion of that street. So there is going to be additional on-street parking provided by the application. And then at the terminus of that, of that street, obviously, it's been highlighted, the pedestrian path which will connect to Greenberg Oaks, which we think provides excellent connectivity between the site and 95th Avenue and, and adjoining uses. In terms of off-street parking, all but three of the units will have two-car wide garages with two-car driveways. So four off-street spaces per lot. The other three units, lots seven, eight, and 11, will have one-car wide garages, which will also have a space in front. And there is also the option that those, those homes may have tandem garages. So they will provide a minimum of two and at least three. So with those double wide garages and those three single wide garages, we are providing significant amounts of, of off-street parking as well and certainly greater than is required by the code. As Monica mentioned, the, or as staff alluded to there, the, the plan development with that application, we are requesting a reduction in minimum lot size, minimum lot width, the minimum front yard, street side yard, minimum interior yard, a 30% increase in the maximum density is allowed through the plan development standards and an increase in the garage frontage width for lots six, nine, 10, and 12. So only four of the, of the 17 units. Just looking at the preliminary, preliminary plat and starting on the east and, and working to the west, we do believe that the plan development allows us to create a smooth step-down transition in those densities. Currently, the apartments to the east in Greenberg Oaks. And then on the other side of 95th Avenue and also to the north and south, we have single family detached homes. And we do think that that transition from the slightly smaller units on the east side, moving west to the larger units does help to facilitate that transition between the apartments and the single family detached and, and kind of soften that edge between that higher density and, and the lower density surrounding those apartment or that apartment complex. So those homes that are located at the terminus of the street, six through 12, will be three-story homes, while the homes on lots one through five and 13 through 17 are proposed as two-story homes in order to facilitate that blend of, of lot sizes and just that transition in density as we move away from the apartment complex down to 95th Avenue. You can also see there the location of track E and track D adjacent to 95th Avenue. And just to show the, the site renderings or the artist's renderings of those, the location of that water quality facility at, on 95th Avenue adjacent to the open space does help to transition from 95th Avenue into the homes in a, in a way that reduces any kind of visual impact from the development on 95th Avenue. We think it creates a really nice buffer between the development and existing development on ninety-fifth. That open space area is proposed to be landscaped with additional plantings and in addition to those white oaks that are being retained there and which helps also to maintain that existing streetscape and the existing view that you get from ninety-fifth, including those white oaks. So the water quality facility has been designed, and just show you another artist's rendering there. The water quality facility has been designed to minimize grading to the greatest extent possible so that we can reduce or eliminate walls as much as we possibly can. What that does is allow a more seamless transition between the water quality facility and the open space area. It allows us to use split rail fencing instead of the regular cyclone fencing there so that visually that water quality facility becomes more of a passive part of the total open space area as opposed to just a utility or strictly a utility value for stillwater facilities. So I think those are the main points that I wanted to cover. Obviously, we appreciate the detailed questions that we've had so far. And I guess just to go over a couple of those, that, just to confirm that the perimeter side yards, so abutting adjoining properties, five feet, we have proposed with interior side yards between the new homes at three feet. And then in terms of the Greenberg Oaks, obviously, there will be a public easement over the sidewalk within our development. And we have, as staff mentioned, we have coordinated to make sure that that trail does connect up with an existing pedestrian path or sidewalk within the apartment complex. So that was all I had planned for today. Obviously, we are here for questions. As I mentioned, we've got a representative from the developer and we also have representatives from our planning, engineering, and the site arborist here available to take questions if anybody has additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name's Matt Wellner. I am here on behalf of CTH Investments. Our address is one four seven eight seven southwest Millikan Way in Beaverton, nine seven zero zero three. Thank you, Wayne. That was a great job. You stole most of my thunder, so thank you. Staff, Monica especially, you've done a great job on this, too. This is a project we're very excited about and we're excited to be here tonight. Really, we've been through several renditions with this. And it started with kind of an exploration of the city's cluster ordinance and trying to figure out if that's something we might want to pursue here. What we struggled with at that time was a desire to deliver something that was fee simple so people could have homeownership here and it not just be a rental project, which is relatively present in a lot of cluster projects. We had four really primary goals in it. And the main one was preservation of those existing oak trees. Not only the two oaks that are along our frontage, but also the two oaks that are along the frontage of parcel one. And I think we've worked pretty hard to make sure that not only are those going to be retained in a healthy and stable for the future manner, but that they're also very much an asset to the project. Building that park area around it and adding all the landscaping that we've proposed. I think it's going to be a neat, it's not only is it going to be a good buffer, as Wayne referred to it as, but I think it's going to be a nice gathering space, too, not only for the people that live here in this project, but also other people that want to find their way here from the neighborhood. Wayne mentioned also the density transect piece, which I think was, is a very important, it's hard to envision a little bit, but it's very important just because of, if you drove by the site, you can see the three-story apartments. It's much more, it's a residential use, but it's much more intensive use. And kind of the stepping down of product from east to west, I think will really soften the feel of that higher intensity use throughout this entire neighborhood. Parking was a big, big deal. I don't recall for sure, but I think that the requirement is maybe two off-street spaces per unit, something around there. And I think we're going to have somewhere in the range of around seventy parking spaces total throughout the project for these seventeen units. What we didn't want to have is a lot of overflow parking. Ideally, we'd like to be able to park on ninety-fifth Avenue, but ultimately, there's a plan here for a bicycle lane running down ninety-fifth two, which will ultimately conflict with that parking. But we wanted to provide as much parking as absolutely possible because we didn't want cars from our neighborhood parking out into the remaining of the neighborhood. And then last piece I wanted to talk about was the sizing of the pond. Ultimately, that pond area could have been designed much smaller, but what it would have been is a deep hole in the ground with very large retaining walls on at least three sides. We wanted to make it very much kind of an aesthetic piece of the park area that we were developing next to it. And so we widened out the actual footprint of the pond, added a lot of landscaping to it. It allowed us to remove quite a bit in the way of the walls and the heights of the walls around it. And so it'll feel much more like the landscape rather than just a hole in the ground for an engineering purpose. So again, we're very excited about this project and we're excited to hear what your thoughts are on it, too. And I'm here for any questions if you might have any.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Wayne. I see Commissioner K. Seven, you have a question. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you guys for the nice presentation. Actually, Matt, you kind of answered part of my question, which was how many parking spots are we planning? You answered that part. The second part of that question was suppose cars are parked on either side of the private road. Is there enough room for any emergency vehicles to pass through, especially a fire truck or anything like that? That was my second clarifying question.
Wayne, I can respond to that. As we've designed it, we have parking on one side of this street. So, yes, there's absolutely, yeah, there's absolutely enough of a travel way for emergency access vehicles.
I'll also just mention with the concern about emergency vehicle access that we are widening ninety-fifth to be wide enough to facilitate emergency vehicle access as well because ninety-fifth currently has a reduced width. So we are doing additional widening on ninety-fifth, which will help that ninety-fifth meet city standards for emergency vehicle access as well as what Matt was mentioning on the internal private street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner K. Seven. Commissioner Dick, you have a question? Go ahead.
I do. The outside on the plans looks really beautiful. They're kind of more like a condo that is detached because of the lot size. That's what I'm seeing. So are you putting in the fences between each home and planting the trees that I saw on those plants? Is that part of your design for the homeowners?
The landscaping that you see in the planning set is landscaping that will all be a requirement of the project and that will all be provided as part of the project. Fencing, we would provide around, so there'll be perimeter fencing around the exterior of the project. And then the rear yards will be fenced to up to about the back of a house. There's no fencing in between the, kind of the, in the setback area between the sides of the houses, but the rear yards will all be fenced, yes.
I have just one secondary question following up. So these are homes where there would be no garden space, but more like a patio space behind them? Is that what I'm seeing in the plans?
There'd be a little bit of green area in the rears, for sure. A lot of the, kind of the, the active space would be in that park area that we're setting aside, definitely in the neighborhood. But there would be a patio and a small grassy area, maybe a raised garden bed in one spot. So they are smaller yards, yes, but they're definitely very usable yards.
And I would, I would just mention there that we have not requested a rear yard reduction. So the rear yard setback is maintained for the city standards for the district, which helps to maintain privacy and does provide that fifteen-foot rear yard for residents in the homes. So there is room for that patio or a small garden barbecue area, that type of thing in the rear of the homes. So I just wanted to highlight that that was not one that we had requested a reduction on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Commissioner Miranda, you have questions? Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. I have some tree questions, but also first, will the HOA have a restriction on putting fences between the homes with the three foots on each side? Or if the new homeowner came in, would they be allowed to put a fence between the homes?
I don't believe a fence is allowed within that six-foot area because there's a private maintenance easement between those units when they're six feet apart like that. I can't say that for certain, but I'm ninety percent sure that's the case.
I'm just thinking from a, from a, from a dog owner and a privacy situation, just about that. And also bringing your big boat, you know, your big canoe, it'd be kind of hard if there was a fence there. And also spite between neighbors, as happens. My next question has to do with the park in the front. As a HOA-managed park, is it considered for just the HOA? Or is it considered a public space? So if I'm walking from the apartments through your, through your new private street, can I take a sit at the, at the park or is it just for the residents?
I don't think that anybody would run you off. Ultimately, it's going to be owned and maintained by that HOA. I would totally welcome it if the city was at all interested in owning and maintaining that park space as well. So I think that everybody's going to have an opportunity to utilize that space for certain.
Okay. I think what I'm getting at is just the cultural divide between the townhomes and the apartment complex. That it's going to, it's going to be a big change in lifestyle to those who are living in the apartments and behind them. I know that they are non-conforming or grandfathered up to the lot line. And in viewing, in viewing the site today, I was very aware of how much life was going on in the patios and decks of those particular apartments and how their light will be diminished by having the fifteen-foot yards to look into and that there might be some conflict between the new residents and the old residents. And that it could be an interesting HOA situation. I used to manage an HOA and so I have a very interesting experience with how people like to behave. So I just was concerned about the residents of the apartment building and their change in lifestyle. I understand that the plan is to the standards set by the planning commission's standards. It just does give me a little bit of pause about how much light they will be reduced to. And then my last question is actually regarding to the arborist and the white oak health. I noticed that those trees are very substantial and very old. And we just had a wicked windstorm and lots of trees came down. And I wanted to know about the health of the trees and their life cycle. And when would we expect them to need to come down? Or would be likely to fall down into that retention pond?
Yep, this is Todd Prager. I'm the project arborist with Terrigan and Associates. Our address is thirty-one forty-five West New Circle. Link us, we go in nine seven oh three four. So the question about the health of the oaks. Let me just get the numbers. So there's two oaks on the northern frontage, which has the existing house. Those are five eighty-one and five eighty-two. Five eighty-two is the northernmost oak. And that oak is in, you know, I would classify it as average health. So it's not in great health, but it's not in poor health. The next oak to the south of that is what I would characterize as in decline. I don't think that that tree has a long lifespan ahead of it. But it's not an immediate hazard and it's something that, my understanding is the owner wants to retain that tree. And that's kind of their prerogative and to deal with the management of that tree as it goes forward. The other two southern oaks, five seventy-six and five seventy-seven, are, you know, I again say average health, not poor health. And there's really nothing significant wrong with, I guess, the three trees that I'm considering average health. They just haven't had, you know, a lot of maintenance in the past. And they would benefit from some pruning and removal of the dead wood that just naturally accumulates over time. And I think they have a good lifespan ahead of them for the three trees. But I, you know, as we were going through this, I was thinking about the ice storm. And oaks in particular were hit hard by the ice storm. So I haven't been by the site since the ice storm. So I don't know, Wayne or Matt, if you've been by there, if there's been any branch failures. So if that hasn't happened, that's a good sign as to the health and longevity of the trees. But I think it's worth, you know, just as we move forward through construction, pruning the trees, since there is going to be an active-use park, at least under the two trees, just to remove the dead wood so we don't have, you know, branches shedding out. But those trees do have a good future ahead of them.
Thank you so much for your time. I'm a big tree advocate and have received street trees as a remediation for other buildings. So I'm very happy to talk about trees. In my site visit, there was also, it being a meadow, quite a lot of birds in the area and within the, the smaller fruit trees. And I wonder where they will go, but that's for another day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Commissioner Wasson, please go ahead.
Hi. I wanted to ask what the setbacks were for lots six and twelve, to the north and south respectively?
So those, those two lots, in terms of the north side, the side yard setback there is the standard city five feet for the zone. So that is not being reduced. And then the rear yard is fifteen feet. So on those perimeter lots with those perimeter yards, the standard setbacks are being applied to those lots.
And they're both three-story units on those lots?
That's, yes, that's proposed. And they obviously will be within the height limit of the district as well. We haven't requested any height, any changes to height. We haven't requested any height, um, any changes to height or anything for those as well.
Um, sorry, uh, what is, what is the height likely to be? Uh, I, I don't know the height limit off the top of my head.
Matt, do you know the height of those homes? I just.
Uh, my guess is they're between thirty and thirty-five, um, but I'll have to look.
Uh, thirty, I think the proposed height is thirty feet. Um, and the maximum height is for the district is thirty-five. Um, how those uh measured?
That, that's a gabled roof. It's likely to be a gabled roof, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, since, I have a question. Since Matt mentioned that um they, you will not mind if the city takes over track E. I'm just curious, has there been discussion between you and the city about the city taking over track E? And if so, why, why would the city not do so, since everybody's here?
I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it was just, it wasn't the right time yet. I think you, you get further down the road with these and, and get, get the track built and landscaped. Then um, if the city is interested, then yeah, absolutely, we'd be interested in, in that kind of conveyance. I, the reason they wouldn't is that it's another maintenance responsibility. And uh, the city has X amount, X amount of resources for maintenance.
Got it. Commissioners, do you have any more questions? I see none. So thank you, Wayne, Matt and Todd. And um, we'll go to the uh public testimony section. Kealan, do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, we have one caller on the line and I will pass her through right now.
Uh, just one second. Um, so let me read the uh requirement for the past, uh, for the public testimony. Speaker will be timed and limited to three minutes. Your time will begin after you clearly state your name and address. So we have the first caller, please.
First caller is Julia Good.
Julia Good.
Oh, Julia, hi. We have your, we have your uh written testimony as well. So please uh state your name and address and you have uh three minutes.
Yes, my name is Julia Good. My address is one one eight six five Southwest Ninety-Fifth Avenue. Um, I guess I said in the written testimony. My concern is the calculations and how they come up with seventeen units um in less than, in less than two acres of land, um, far less than two acres of land if you take off the street and you take off the tract D and I believe E. Um, I'm concerned about the congestion. I'm concerned about how there's only one way in and out of the, of the um, of the properties. And I think um Commissioner Miranda actually asked some of the more detailed questions that I had regarding the public access to the apartments. And the concern about those apartments being shi- um blocked by um the, the west sun, which is, can be a really beneficial sun for um light as well as growing vegetables or anything they might want to do on their homes. Um, so I appreciate those questions. Thank you also for the, for the um comments from the arborist. Um, I guess what I'm, I'm most interested in finding out is why, why, why it comes up to seventeen units, why it comes up to seventeen units. Um, it, this is a huge, huge impact. When I hear there's a locational for, for seventy cars, I think, good lord, seventy cars coming out of a street that's not really very long. It's a hammerhead, if, if you want to call it. Um, and I see that it looks like they'll be parking on one side of the street because per emergency vehicle close to be able to pass. And there, there won't be any parking in the hammerhead. Is that correct? So those are my questions, I guess. I really wouldn't, I don't want to see, um, I don't want to see these high congested areas in our, our neighborhood. It's not that I'm opposed to development. I'm completely for development. Um, of course, I'd love to keep it at, open and old, but I understand people have the right to develop. But I feel like this is a highly congested project. Um, so that's, that's what I want to, that's what I want to say to you is, it's concerning to be at four point five across the street and then do um R seven. And that turns into seventeen units because of some thirty percent extra bonus that they get if they put things in. It just, hmm, I feel like the zoning should be kept as the zoning was meant and not bonuses for people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Before you go, uh, commissioners, do you have any question for Julia? Um, all right. I see none. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dick, you have question?
I, I do. Does, Julia, do you, do you live right there by the project?
I do. In fact, I think the um, the street will be approximately um coming out between my house and the, and the house too, I believe that'd be the south of me. Um, I think the street will come right out at our, our homes. And so as they turn their, turn their lights into her home, if they go left in my home, let they go right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more question for Julia? Okay, I see none. Julia, thank you. Um, the applicant or the staff will respond to your questions. Um, Kealan, do we have any other callers?
Thank you.
There are no other callers.
Okay, so we don't have any caller. So Monica or Wayne or Matt, anybody want to address the caller?
I can speak to part of it, but I'd like Wayne or Monica or somebody to talk about the actual calculation.
Okay, so I can go over the calculation quick. Um, and because our plan development criteria does allow that thirty percent bonus, um, that does, did increase uh what is allowed in that range. So we took the total site area of, uh, and it's in the staff report too that I can send out, but the exact numbers, it's roughly seventy-seven thousand square feet. And then we minus out the dedicated area for the streets. So in this case, um, it was almost eleven thousand square feet of private streets to get a net developable area. Once we have the net developable area, we divide that by five thousand square feet, which is the allowed lot size in an R seven zone. So then you get the maximum uh density range. Um, and then you uh take eighty percent of that to then get the minimum density. So then we have a minimum and maximum density range that is allowed within that R seven zone. And then because this is a planned development, our criteria within the planned development section allows for an additional thirty percent um addition of density that they're able to use to the ma- uh, in addition to that maximum density. So it does, you know, I understand that this project does um feel very dense, but it is um allowed within our code. Our code um does give kind of the authority when it's a planned development to add this additional density. Um, but I think this is well-designed as um mentioned by Matt and Wayne. Uh, the transition and staff was very um attentive to that and making sure that it was designed well to kind of accommodate this density.
Uh, I'm gonna jump in. This is Tom Maguire, the Assistant Committee Development Director. And uh, just to put some numbers to it, I believe the maximum density is thirteen under the R seven with the thirty percent, taking it four additional units to seventeen. So just to give you some numbers to put it a little bit more perspective, it's going from thirteen to seventeen. And if they did not do the planned development, they would not be able to get that density. But we would also not get that open space tract. And so to, you know, maximize the number of units, then houses would be coming basically right up to the ninety, to ninety-six, to the street. And the trees would be taken out. And yeah, you would get a, a more traditional subdivision. So that's the, that's the trade-off. We, the idea, whole idea of a planned development is to get some public benefit. And in return for an uh property owner applicant providing some additional public benefit that normally wouldn't be required, they get, can take advantage of the density bonus.
My only comment in addition to that is, I think I mentioned the beginning of the, of, of, of when I spoke initially, that we came into this looking at the city's cluster ordinance. That would have actually allowed um in excess of twenty units on the property. Um, again, it wouldn't have allowed us to plan it as fee simple and look at homeownership opportunities. Um, it would have at a maximum been a, been a condo plat of detached units potentially. But it would have, um, it would have been, there would have been an opportunity for more density. Beyond that, if we're looking a year and a half out from now, if you consider uh the missing metal housing opportunities that Hou- House Bill two thousand and one are gonna bring forth. Um, they're basically allowing on any uh legal lot of record, uh duplex, triplex or fourplex could, could be placed legally, uh, pl- the mally resulted a lot more uh density than even what we're showing. We're committing at this point in time to the plan you're seeing, uh seventeen units. Um, and ad- admittedly, it is, it's, it's, it's a little dense, but the cost of construction is expensive these days. And um, and we're doing frontage work in front of the neighboring property that's gonna add to that cost. Um, and I think we've done a really good job with the plan. I think we've, we've been pretty responsible about making sure that we're, we're preserving the, the resources that are most important there and, and giving the city the needed housing that's, that's so important as well. So, thank you.
And I apologize, I've just got one, one, I just want to add a couple of things to that. And um, the, the first thing would be, I know there were comments about parking. There is no parking um in the hammerhead turnaround. Obviously, that area is reserved for emergency vehicle access. So there is no parking in the hammer here, in that turnaround. Um, but I would point out that, and I know that this isn't, maybe doesn't um satisfy some of those questions, but the minimum parking requirement um is one off-street vehicle parking space per house. So um, we are, we really are going, um, despite the, the density increase, we really are going uh, uh well over and above what that off-street parking requirement would be or what that parking requirement would be. So um, I know parking is always a concern and we've done everything possible to address that. I know that it has been a big design factor for the applicant. Um, and then just the last thing I wanted to say is just that it is important to remember. And I know, um, I, I read the, the letter of comment. Um, and I did just want to highlight the fact that the city does um calculate density based on that net, that net area minus um roads. And so um, I know that there was a concern that um, there was the density. And then once you have the access road um and, and things. And so just to point out and highlight that, yes, um, those calculations, those density calculations are made based on that net area um with those, that access netted out of that calculation. So.
Thank you.
This is Matt Sprague, um, with Pioneer Design Group. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Pioneer Design Group, nine zero two zero Southwest Washington Square Road, Portland, Oregon, nine seven feet. Uh, I just wanted to cover a couple of things. One is that uh there was, there was the, the comment regarding seventy parking spaces. I just wanted to point out that there, seventy parking spaces that are being provided by the project far exceed the requirements. So it doesn't mean that there's going to be seventy vehicles within the, within the development itself. It'd be substantially less. Um, but it will prevent, uh, you know, when you have a party, a Christmas party, et cetera, it'll prevent uh visitors from having to park outside of the, the community itself. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention was that the sun is primarily from southeast to southwest on this project. And so adjacent to the apartment area, the sun won't be blocked until extremely late in the afternoon in terms of the apartment areas, which I think in the summer is ideal. When it gets really hot, they'll actually benefit from a little bit of shading, not a substantial amount, but a little bit of shading. So uh, the, the sun won't be totally blocked from the apartments to the east. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Um, Commissioner Miranda, do you have a question at this point?
Uh, um, I did, but uh Tom answered it with his specific numbers. I thought it generous to explain the math in detail and also explained a little bit of the spirit of the law. Um, and at another time, I will ask more questions about the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I guess that's all for public testimonies. Thank you, applicant. Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Tom. Uh, commissioners, what do you think? Comments? Do you all like it? Uh, Commissioner Wasson?
Um, I think overall, I just, as a matter of opinion, not, not um a comment on the legality of it. But um, it all makes sense. And I think of, within the, the boundaries of, of the thirty percent um increase and, and the, the way that it works, the code works, um, it all makes sense. It looks well-intentioned. Um, I, and from Ninety-Fifth, I think that the, the development will be very pleasant and, you know, uh, for, for being a development and its impact on the neighborhood on, on Ninety-Fifth. I think that's um going to be a, a, a good, a very good thing, um, if we can accomplish that. The only thing I would say is I kind, I feel sorry for the neighbors. I have sympathy for the neighbors to the north of this and south of lots six and twelve, which you might have gathered from my previous questions. Um, you know, basically you're gonna have a thirty-foot tall wall suddenly appear um five feet away from the, those neighbors' fence lines. And they don't have terribly huge um backyards as it is. Um, and it's their side, their side, um, their, their side setbacks when it, it's the, the back setback of the neighbors' houses. Um, and it just, it just feels really tight there. Uh, and um, whether or not I would vote for this being the reasonable course of action, um, I, I probably will. But um, it does feel like that, that border between the three-story tall houses and the immediate neighbors is gonna be um a little unpleasant. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wasson. Commissioner Dick, you have any comments?
I do. Um, thank you, Jamie. I, I really agree with what you said. And I also, when I look at this, the, the drawings are beautiful. But to see it in reality, they're very small. They're not really family because there's no yard for playing or et cetera. So your target market must be like young, um, families without children, a couple, rather than with children there, I would think. But I also think it's pretty tight. Um, the privacy is just gone for everyone in that development. And I understand the density, but I almost wish there were less homes to give a little, a little more privacy. Um, but it's definitely, it looks geared for um young adults without families. And that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Commissioners, any other comments? It's time for deliberation. So, oh, come in, Commissioner Whitehurst, please go ahead.
Hello, hi, thank you. Um, I just want to acknowledge uh the written submission uh by uh Julia. And also thank you uh, city uh staff, uh planner Monica for addressing those comments. Um, uh, in the written submission, it was mentioned that when they were looking for a home uh ten or so years ago, they ten or so years ago, they were considering public safety and lighting, things of that nature. And I do think that this development is a positive for that, for the infrastructure sidewalks and lighting. And I, I just want to acknowledge also Miranda, Commissioner Miranda, for your comments. That the written submission, reading over the public hearing had helped me take a closer look at this. And thank you to the applicant for all the information that you were willing to provide and also acknowledging that you were going over what was recommended for density or excuse me, going under was, you know, what is allowable for density and also for parking.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitehurst. So I don't see any, Commissioner Roberts, do you have comments?
Um, merely to say that I agree with pretty much everything I've heard in terms of it's tight, but it's beautiful and it's going to be frustrating for some and all the, and I'm happy to see the parking, just simply a matter of what's been said. I just want to reinforce. That's all.
Thank you. So I think we don't have any more comments and does anybody want to make a motion? This time we're going to do slowly, so. So we, we can start with a motion, Commissioner.
Pulling up my cheat sheet here.
Okay, Commissioner Roberts, please go ahead.
I'm looking for the
Okay, before you do that, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Dick, would you please low, lower your virtual hands?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Because we're going to use that for voting, so.
Oh, yes. Okay, I think I can pull this out. I'm going through your notes. These are things that we're recommending for approval to the city council, true?
Uh, no, we are, we're making the final decision, yeah.
We are making, okay. And so that case, I move for approval of applications, P D R two zero two zero dash zero 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 one and S U B two zero two zero 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 four. This is the plan development review and the subdivision. And adoption of the findings and conditions contained in the staff report and based on the testimony that we've heard today.
Very good. So Commissioner, we have a motion in front of us for approval of application file numbers. P D R twenty twenty dash zero 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 one and S U B twenty twenty, twenty twenty dash zero 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 four. And we're adopting the finding and condition approval contained the staff report as well as the testimony received.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Tom.
Sorry to interrupt, but I, just a reminder to the commission that this is a planned development that you're approving. So you actually need a motion for the concept plan approval. And a motion for the detailed plan approval.
Got it.
It's got it. And they may, they have to be two separate.
Two separate motion, yeah. So that's, we can, so the, the, the concept plan has no, does the concept plan have condition, Tom? Approval condition or just the detail plan? Okay, so, so Commissioner Roberts, the, only the detail plan has the conditional approval. Take your time.
I'm going to do this twice, once for the concept with no conditions and once for the detail. I move for approval of applications, P D R twenty twenty dash zero 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 one and S U B twenty twenty zero 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 zero, no. He's shaking his head. So the, the P D R is concept and is there also not a detail for P D R? Or is the sub the P D R?
There's, there's a concept plan and a detailed plan for the P D R.
And the subdivision is only.
That plan really only applies to the P D R and not to the subdivision. So subdivision comes in with the detail technically. You want to get the motion.
Okay, P D R, concept only, subdivision both.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, guys. We'll get them.
Oh, you're doing great. Thank you.
I move for approval of the concept plan for applica, for the application, the plan development review, P D R twenty twenty dash zero 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 one. Based on the staff report and the testimony we received.
Okay, Commissioner.
No, and there's no conditions attosited with that.
Yeah, or concept plan, yeah.
Okay.
That's my understanding. All right, Commissioners, so we have a motion for approval of the concept plant with the finding in the staff report and the testimony received. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Whitehurst, second?
Okay, we have a Commissioner, Commissioner Whitehurst, second. So let's, uh, let's take a second. So those, so those who will approve, I will ask you to raise your virtual hand and say aye at the same time. I, I will give you a five second to do that.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those approve, say aye.
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 Okay, so I have the hand raised up.
I said it at the wrong time. I thought the first one you said was approval.
Yes, it is, it is approval, yes. So please
Okay.
Raise your virtual hands and say aye.
For approval.
For approval, yes.
Aye.
Alright.
Okay. So we have Commissioner Schick, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner K seven, Commissioner Brook, Commissioner who? I guess Commissioner Roberts and Whitehurst too.
I was gonna say, are we just defaulted ayes because we move in second? We have to aye also.
Yes, you have to aye too.
You don't? Okay.
So Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Whitehurst.
So for the last two years, I've been not aying myself.
Doreen, do we, do you have all that?
Yes, who is the nay?
I haven't asked yet.
Okay.
Oh. So no, who is not a nay?
So that's, lower your hand now. Sorry, this is a virtual conference, so it's a lot more complicated than live one. So those who oppose, please raise your hand now. And say nay. I don't see anybody raising their hand. Commissioner, I think we have a commissioner missing today.
Yes, Commissioner.
No nays, it's not here.
Yeah.
So do we have a eight, a eight commissioner voting against, Doreen?
No, no one is voting against because there's eight, yeah, we have eight and there are only nine commissioners, so we're good.
Okay, sure. So, all right, so Commissioner Roberts, please go ahead with your second motion.
Okay. Sorry, Matt Wayne, it's not always just.
Yeah, it's a virtual conference.
Okay, so this is going to be for a, for both P U, P D R and sub, and it's going to be including the conditions.
Yes.
So I move for approval of applications, plan development review, P D R twenty twenty dash zero 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 one and subdivision, S U B twenty twenty dash zero 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 four. An adoption of the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report and based on the testimony that we've received today.
Thank you. So the motion in front of us to, is for approval of the detail plan with the conditional approval, contain the staff report as well as the testimony received. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Whitehurst.
So Commissioner Whitehurst, second. So again, I will give you a few seconds to find the raise hand button. And please click on it if you are ready, if you want to vote yes. All right, so those who in favor, who vote yes on the motion, say aye.
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 All right, so I'm counting the hand, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So I'm counting eight hands, so it passed unanimously. Okay, so both motion passed unanimously. And if you want to appeal the decision, please contact the staff for more information. Hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for your.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. All right, so let's move on to other business.
Okay.
Tom, do you have any? Go ahead.
We have a little I'm hearing a audio thing. Okay, it's gone now. Yes, well, very quickly, everyone got your rolling calendar. We have a few more things, items, more and more items are being added. So I always like to go over some of those things. Our very next meeting, which is March fifteenth, in two weeks, we have another plan development, application, a twenty-three lot subdivision and plan development. And we're also Shelby Rahala, our city attorney, and I are going to do, we do this probably not once a year, but maybe once every one and a half to two years with the planning commission, we're going to go over the land use law issues with all of you. That's a, it's a good, important briefing or just, it, it, it's good information and I think it will be very helpful to all of you going forward. We have a fair number of new commissioners and I can't even remember which of you have gone through the land use law previously. And we're not only just covering land use law, but issues of hearings and conducting hearings and and things like these motions and, and things like that. So we'll cover a lot of things. So I think that's, that's something that you'll find very useful. And again, that's two weeks. Suddenly we have several land use cases showing up. We have a annexation coming up in April and then we've got a couple more legislative projects. In addition to, I would imagine as we get closer to May, June, we'll probably at that point be ready to bring back all of our big legislative projects, the concept plant, while concept planning for River Terrace, you know, you're actually going to be voting on that in about I think that's May. Well, no, that's April. I think that's going to be April. It hasn't been scheduled yet. It's either going to be April or the first meeting in May. And then we'll get your briefings on Washington Square Regional Plan Update as that moves forward. And then the Tigerd made industrial commercial update project. So the schedule is starting to get busier.
E P.
Cool. You know, Skyler has a really excellent presentation on the history of I, I don't know, that's not land use, maybe it is. You know, he, he went way back. He spoke to our C P O a year or so ago. And it was a stunning presentation on the history of how all this evolved. So just something to think about for the future.
Okay.
But that's what.
That's something that would be of interest to the commission. I can always have him come in and do a briefing on that too.
Yeah. Thanks.
And any other topics, if you have a specific interest, please let me know. Or an interest in something else the city is doing, I can also bring staff in to get briefing. It's probably, we're probably getting close to having a, a, a good time to have our senior transportation planner, Dave Roth, come in and give you a briefing on transportation system plan update. You will actually, it's part of that comprehensive plan, so you will actually get to vote on that eventually. The transportation committee is working on that, but because it's officially part of our comprehensive plan, you get to, you have to approve it. So when we eventually get to that point of the T S P, commonly known as the T S P, Transportation System Plan Update, you'll be voting on that. So I should talk to him about getting himself scheduled for, for you, so you can have a sense of what's coming up. T S P is a pretty big deal. We do it once every ten years.
Wow. Cool.
And then any other topics that you're, that you're interested in, I can, we can do briefings. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I, could I ask?
Agree to send me an email too, if you want. That's, there's, there's not an issue with that. I'm sorry, K seven, were you asking me?
Yeah, can I ask it? Maybe this is out of order, I don't know, but I just wanted to, I had a curiosity question. I am kind of jealous that Beaverton has multiple swimming pools and we have only one in Tigerd. Is there any plan to add swimming pools and or a community hall like that, like the Canister or something like that?
Not sure of. Couldn't necessarily be involved in that. That would come through our Public Works Parks Department if it were to happen.
If you guys want to chip in, I got a big yard.
Probably come through the Prab, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Is there any way to motivate them?
I, I'm on that board and I have never heard anything about a swimming pool.
Yeah, the only one we have is the one, the next to Tigerd, right? That's the only one.
Yeah.
Other than, I don't have anything else for tonight.
I have a question. Is it okay to answer, ask it now? In the, in the, sorry, my dog is having a moment. In the spirit of next week's decision and tonight's decision, if you could give me just a quick, the spirit of the subdivision thirty percent density bonus, that'd be really helpful to me because I absolutely understand density. But I also would hope that there was some contingent if that thirty percent bump gave us the type of housing we need, which is more affordable housing and that doesn't seem to be part of the bonus. So I just kind of wanted to get a little background on why we would want to do that.
Well, that's a good question. Yeah, and many of you were not on the commission, it was what, three years ago, maybe? Maybe four years ago, time flies, that we mod, last modified the code and modified the P D chapter. And the planning commission. And the planning commission um. Uh, voted on that and had discussions. Um, so the whole idea of a P D, the classic example is usually trying to save some sort of environmental feature. Say you have a forest, a wetland, a stream, that's a valuable uh, resource. And uh. There's a public interest in maintaining that resource and keeping that resource. So the original idea was, okay, let the develop, if we, if the developer does the trade off of keeping that resource and puts it in a tract. And doesn't develop it, then we let them transfer that density. Or even give them a little bit of bonus density as an incentive. To, you know, build and the, the portion of, if there is one, the portion of the property away from that wetland or forest or whatever. So there's this public benefit in that the public developer saves the wetland and then the developer gets a little extra bonus density. Um, the, our plan development, we've kind of broadened that out a little bit. The uh, just it doesn't have to be an environmental resource, but we do want a public benefit. That's, that's the key. And the criteria, the approval criteria for our plan development are written pretty broadly. They're very discretionary, very discretionary. And that's why it comes to you guys, because you guys get to determine the level of public benefit. You get to weigh, okay, given the density and the impacts that come with that density, did they provide us with enough public benefit to outweigh that? Or to mitigate whatever impacts might come from that density. Or from the setbacks or, you know, all the various things that they, the base zone regulations that they can modify under a plan development. So that's actually up to you guys to make that decision. Um, we don't specifically say, talk about housing affordability. That's a little harder to do. Uh, usually though, like in this situation, since this case is over now, we can talk a little bit about that. But in this situation, you have smaller lots, a little bit of a different type of housing product. So these are gonna be probably not affordable in the, you know, federal. Minimum type of, you know, the federal official affordable housing type of sense, but they're going to be more affordable than a lot of the lots further out on the edge of town, River Terrace. That are on larger lots, larger houses. So it, it does provide a little bit more range of prices. And the more, the more, the bigger the range, the bigger the market. From just your standard big apartment house up to your large single dwelling, the better off we are. So that's the whole idea of missing middle with cottages, with duplexes, triplexes, quads, those kinds of things is to. Make sure that, is to try to bring more um, houses to the market that fit that middle, those middle prices.
I, I mean, I to, I totally get that, that, that piece. And I thought it was really quite fascinating that they have worked with the city to, to, to make that cost determination. About the cluster choice versus these townhomes. Um, and I'm, I am just concerned about the equity piece of um. That apartment building and, and the, the lifestyle change that, that will occur for them. Um, I, I get, I get it, but I don't really know how we can have these more um, kind of philosophical questions here in the committee. If that's even part of what we do. Um, because I don't feel like this, although it is, is legal. I don't think that is necessarily the spirit of what the commission was trying to do three years ago. I can't assume that they were trying to box people in. And I agree, I've seen other, other um developments. Specifically across the street from next um, next meeting's um, decision. Where they, they are a little bit bigger than what has been proposed here, but those were, you know, five fifty. These, these are gonna go for four, four fifty. And um, as uh, Commissioner Dick mentioned, that, that, that isn't, isn't, this isn't, isn't necessarily a very family friendly option. We all need options, but um, you know, just what we're trying, what we're trying to help facilitate and foster from our developers. We can't, we can't overdo it, but I'm not sure how to, how to massage it.
A couple of things. One, we have to be careful. We can't talk about the next case. Cause it's a quasi judicial case, so you can't talk about that. Until you're in the public hearing. So I, I won't be talking about that one. We can talk about the previous one because it's over. And also um, we also need uh, be careful about focusing on families. Because, you know, it partly, you know, the developer, they have a specific market that they're, that they're trying to, you know. But, you know, one things we've found, one of the things we found in our um, buildable lands inventory for housing is that. It's not necessarily families that are not finding housing, but it's also um, two-person households. Um, retirees who are downsizing. Um, there, there is a market for a smaller house. Uh, folks who don't want to take care of too much of a yard, you know, they want a minimal amount of that. And so um, when we're talking about um, you know, this broad. Making available a, a broad range of housing types, we have to keep that in mind too. That, that is part of the market and, and that is a part of the market that, that we don't have a lot of product in right now also. So um, yeah. To some extent on those, I, I try to let the developer, you know, if the developers have a certain type of market in mind, I'm just gonna make the assumption. That they know the market and that they know people are gonna be looking and that there will be buyers for that. And there are people who want that and they accept that they don't have much in the way of setbacks or whatever. And then another point, one, one thing about this particular one that we finished is it's, it's pretty unusual for that, an apartment building like that to be so close to the property line. So that was good. This neighborhood is a little strange. I was looking at the aerial photo. Uh, while we were having the hearing and even some of the houses, the house that you pointed out to the south of them. For some reason, just right on top of the property line. So there's a lot of non-conforming development in this neighborhood. It's, it's a little odd. But, you know, you can take that into account as you decide whether their uh, public benefits are. You know, proportional or equal or beneficial to an extent to allow that. That bonus for them. So, let's see, I think Darlene had her hand up and then.
I did. And I, I have a comment about that density is so dense. And, and what you're taking out, and I'm a huge. Believer in having green space. And so they receive this. Um, density rule because they're saving the oats. But what about um, all of the wildlife that is now being pushed back even further? Um, those are things I think about because once, once those areas are gone, there's no going back. And so I'm al- also on the parks board, so that's a really big deal to me about the wildlife and, and the things that are there. And also I worried about when I looked at how the people in the apartment buildings who have children. To um, this density housing that's really the target market would be single or no family, just adults. And are they gonna like living next to children and playing and et cetera? So there are a lot of things to consider. There are times, I really wish I could vote on this sometimes. And this would have been one. I, I just think the density was a little too much density and not enough space. And if I were a senior downsizing, I would not live there. And the reason being, there's no space to even grow hardly a tomato plant there. So to me, it would, would have been a no. I, I would have been the no on that. Just because I think there are too many homes regardless of that density thirty percent. I just think that you're typing people on top of each other. For me, that's a no. That, that's just my personal opinion. Thanks.
I understand. And I would just point out that there are a lot of different opinions out there and a lot of people have a lot of different um. Things that they're looking for in their housing. And I would just point out that we have approved lots and lots and lots of developments. Just like this all over town and they're all being snapped up faster. Build them. It's really, it's, I, it's the market. I'm. It's the way it is. It's a high, high demand. So these, these, these lots and these houses will go really fast. I mean, there are people that want them, that value them, and it's just the right thing for them. So again, we have to keep in mind as we're planning that there's a whole diversity of interests and tastes out there.
I guess I'm just not liking living on top of each other. That's not for me. But I'm not the younger generation that wants no responsibility for the land, just a nice place to live. That obviously fits that grid. Uh, it looks beautiful in the drawings. I think saving the oats and having a little water is beautiful.
Okay, so we have lots of que, lots more. So Jamie and then I think next and then Craig.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Um, so I'm an architect, so I'm generally pro development. Um, I, and I, I um, do understand um, the importance of density and um. And what we're trying to accomplish here um, in terms of affordable housing um, and, and bearing housing um, types. Uh, I, it did, it did seem like the density was very urban relative to the surrounding neighborhood. Like it was just sort of like this abrupt pod dropped out of the sky of, um, you know, three-story townhomes. Um, and so, so I have sympathy for the, the adjacent neighbors, even though most of them did not show up here. So I didn't feel like I should be getting into a, a tussle about it necessarily. But um, but yeah, you know, having a thirty-foot wall suddenly sprout up five feet from your back fence is, is, is a big diff, uh, big. You know, they're, they're gonna probably react to that at some point, whether or not they're paying attention now. Um, and I'm wondering if uh, maybe the, there should be like a, and, and, and I might not understand. Or um, how that thirty percent increase works. But maybe there should be a sliding scale in terms of how much of an increase can happen relative to the den, the, the existing residential density. So, you know, if it had been maybe fifteen houses or um, you know, even sixteen houses. Or like the setbacks on the north and south edges because it, it's so tight there. And yet, like you're saying, there's non-conforming development there already, you know, increasing those setbacks at lea, at least a few feet. Um, to somehow constant, comp, compensate for that. Uh, um, but yeah, it, it's, it's sort of, what, what I'm gonna say is that. Um, it, it's a hard. Um, it's a hard thing to, to jump into a meeting like that where you have a design that's laid out for you. And you don't know whether or not, you know, the, the project will pencil anymore. If you make some big broad brush, like, I don't like this. So I, I think it should be only twenty percent increase or, or something like that where, um, you know, as a designer, I know that there's a lot of, a lot of issues. That are gonna come together that aren't gonna be figured out in this meeting and that we're making a judgment about. And, and whether or not it's actually feasible to, to make those sorts of judgments or uh, put, you know, put that on, on a project like that. So um, you know, yeah, I, I just, I, I have this big desire for almost like a sliding scale or some way of um. Uh, you know, having it, that, that, that thirty percent or whatever that increases be relative to the existing density. Um, so there's a little bit, it's a little softer. Um.
Well.
Accomplishing the same thing.
I would say as, as the planning commission and looking at the criteria, the criteria is very discretionary. So the, the, it's a bonus density up to thirty percent. So as a commission, if you decided you wanted twenty percent or you, you thought two units as opposed to four units was what was right. You could, you couldn't.
You could do that.
Make that decision. Um, you, you would have to, you know, you'd wanna talk to the applicant about that.
Right.
Uh, maybe some other way they could do, they could. I don't know, you know, we're totally speculating. I don't know if they would have to lose a unit to put larger setbacks. If you wanted to talk to them about larger setbacks or losing a unit, but realize, like you said, it may make the project not pencil out at that point. So that's something that you would have to um, put back on the developer and ask them to respond to.
Okay. And, and so what I'm gonna say about is that I'm not trying to, you know, eagle eye hindsight and, and, you know, do, uh, do anything like that. It's just more um, I, if you, if you tell them that they can go up to thirty percent, they're gonna take the thirty percent. And um, and it makes it hard in my, in our position or my position, to speak for myself, is just um. You know, well, I'm just gonna tell you twenty percent and whether that pencils out or not, um, you, you know, you know what I mean? It, it's, it's just, um, it's a little bit of a big, big step. Um, and you're not seeing whether or not it actually works. Um, what you're, what you're demanding.
The other thing to keep in mind when you're thinking about these types of things and P Ds in particular, when you're trying to weigh impacts. Is the density is just a couple more units. So without any um, input from the planning commission, had they done a subdivision, they could have done lots. To meet the, you know, the thirteen. Uh, maximum density and someone could still build a three-story. House five feet from the property line.
Yeah.
E D, cause that's the minimum setback of the base zone and that's the height limit. So, you know, you're talking about the fifteen feet from the apartment, all of that could happen under the base zoning without. A plan development. So, you know, you really have to think about, okay, it's a plan development, the thirty percent is four additional units. What does that four additional units do that the base zone doesn't do? And how can they, you know, what is the real impact of that? So keep that in.
Thank you.
I think Melanie was next.
Thanks, Tom. Um, so I sure, a lot, I feel like I have like two very intense feelings in my mind every time I read plans like this. Because um, like other people have said, I look at this plan and I think I would never live there. I don't wanna live that close to somebody else. But I also know that there are a lot of people that don't wanna deal with yard maintenance. They never go outside. They don't care about green space. And so I have to think about it as more of, also like when it comes to affordable housing, these are not gonna, these are not gonna be considered affordable housing. But when their lots are bigger, like in a way, it actually increases your property value, right? So then by having the smaller lots, you're able to get a higher quantity of housing. And then it naturally drives the price down a little bit because I think it's very desirable to have a larger lot, right? And but I also think that maybe as a commission, we could take more seriously the zoning changes that come across our meetings. Because sometimes we're like, oh, sure, why not? Let's change the zoning. But ultimately, this is what happens. Like they, um, when you wanna change, you have a suburban neighborhood. Where everyone has, you know, like quarter-sized acre lots. Um, and a developer wants to change the zoning for a very small section within that suburban neighborhood. And of course, they're gonna fill it to max capacity because that's in their, their best interest. So if we actually wanted to avoid that, I'd be like, we should have started several steps ago. And so that's one thought, but I also. I don't know. I think I'm really, I'm impressed with the, what the developers did. I'm really excited that they, uh, the stormwater treatment center. Instead of having it just be like an ugly retaining wall, which we've seen so many times before at other developments, like making it a more beautiful scenic area. And I thought was worth it to add the additional couple houses. And like Tom mentioned, I, I think thirteen houses is too many. So like seventeen versus thirteen is really, I mean, you don't, you don't actually gain that much by not giving them the bonus. Um, and the benefit that we're getting from it, I, I think is worth it. So it's tough to bet.
Thanks. I didn't hear an actual question there, so I didn't respond to that, but.
Um, I, I mostly just wanted to um, like, tell the rest of the commission, like, I am with you a hundred percent. Like, tell the rest of the commission, like I am with you a hundred percent. But also there, like we have to be really uh rational about like what do we actually have control over and. And. People act in predictable ways, right? Like we know that the developer is gonna take the max amount that they're allowed in. Um, and we also know that the neighbors are gonna be some, to some degree upset. So. No questions.
Okay. Great.
All right, well, I, I, I also have a no, no question kind of comment and my, my, my. My first comment is I really appreciate the heart of the, the people who are on this commission. I wish we could all be in person. Especially when we're talking about. These issues that are so very important and I will have to say that I work for a developer. Uh, we are a home builder and. One of the most important things that I see and I've, gosh, I've looked at affordability and so many of these issues and. One of the most important things that we can address affordability is supply. And um how many houses, whether we like them or not. And I, I know you have to be careful about what you're doing to your city and your own backyard. But when it comes to equity and affordability and all these things, we need more houses. And one of the things that wasn't discussed tonight that I almost brought up, but so many of my questions got answered. Was that there's a inventory, serious inventory crisis right now. And prices are for little teeny houses are gonna go to the moon. And every, and the planning commissions and planning commissions all over the city, we have our hands on the valve to some extent, as Thomas said. Because there's some discretion in there. A lot of times it's not the, the builder. Who's just always gonna go to the max, it's all the sites are picked over. Everything that could have been developed in the past has been developed. And the fact that you can get thirty percent more, get a rezone, makes it developable versus zero. So I, 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 I wish we could all be together and discuss this. I, I would love to, to participate in that discussion. I just. I read through the city's report. You know, they have traffic studies, they have environmental studies, they're look at everything and. And so for people to come along and say, well, the traffic's really bad, it's like, this isn't something that's done lightly. This is an intensive, and this wasn't, how many pages did we read in this? It's like two hundred pages. It's like, oh my gosh. They're really working on it, you know, they're really working on it and, and Tom's right, the, the, a, a three story house with a single car garage. Is gonna get sold before it's finished. Because we have no supply and none of us would live there, right? But. So I just, I just wanted to say I appreciate my fellow commissioners and, and this conversation. I hope, man, that we can get together this summer. And start meeting in person and thinking about these things, but I, I'm just a big advocate for. Um, wherever we can add supply, that we would try to add supply and, and, and try and make it look good. And I think they did those. I was looking at those oaks on uh Google Drive and they're beautiful, those, those Oregon oaks and so. Kudos to the developer and the um city for what they did on this project and try and make something good. Out of a tight space, so. No question, Tom, but a comment.
Commissioner Jackson has also, has put his hand up and we haven't heard from him yet, so.
Yeah, sorry to extend the meeting even longer, but. I actually just wanted to say I'm hearing a lot of awesome thoughts that some of which at least would have been great to hear during our discussions. For the hearing itself. So I just wanna encourage everyone, if you have a gut reaction to what we're hearing about. Talk about it. Uh, I mean, we, we have to, we have to keep in mind that, you know, we have time constraints to keep in mind and so forth, but. Just because you can't quote something from code, you're allowed to say how you feel about something.
Cool. Commissioner Robert, you also have.
I'll be really brief, no questions. Uh, when I. Thought about, I, I analyzed before doing the proposal, I thought, you know, this is an experiment. You know, it's, it's a, it's a different form, yeah, would I wanna live there? No. If I was just getting out of school and come, moving out of an apartment to a first. Uh, house, this may be exactly what I would want. Who knows what the market is gonna bring? And I, I completely agree with the housing shortage ever seeing. So comment number one of two is that uh. We don't know how it's gonna turn out. This will attract the people that it will attract. So it may not be us, it may not be families, whoever it is, it'll attract somebody and that's what, because it's a marketplace on both sides of the market. Second comment, this process has been great, having this conversation's been very helpful, I think. Helping us begin to think about how we work together, so. Thanks.
If it's all right, if I, okay, uh, one, one thing that kinda sprang to mind. Is uh, you know. Housing for the elderly, um, you know, these are two story, three story houses and this is not necessarily for, for somebody who. You know. Doesn't want stairs, but um I guess. How does the city think about encouraging? Cause I, I believe we do have a hu- housing shortage for, for. You know, fifty fives and over and, and the like, so um, you know, how does the ci- the, the city think about encouraging? Building housing that um can accommodate somebody who doesn't wanna be dealing with stairs. Or can't, I should say.
Well, that tends to be extremely tough to do with zoning, so we can't really regulate them to do it. In our housing plan, uh, we're, we're always trying to look for ways to incentivize things like that. And that may very about, may very well be something that we, you know, the city just passed recent this construct tiger. Local tiger construction excise tax that we're gonna be using for housing, for supporting housing and that can be. All kinds of different ways. So one way we might be able to do that is maybe to help some developers subsidize. Uh, senior, single level housing, if that's something that we find is, is missing. In the city. Unfortunately, out in River Terrace, Polygon, who is now. Taylor Morrison had an entire subdivision that they were going to do in senior housing. A, a big senior housing apartment complex with um, boy, what was it? Planning, planning commissioners, what was it, like a hundred and thirty? Uh, single detached home lots that were all gonna be single level. And the whole thing was gonna, going to be focused on seniors and they. The market, whatever reason shifted and they totally abandoned that and now they're going to, they're gonna be doing uh triplex and. Sixplex and quadplex units out there because. Cause of this affordability issue. They have a, a market that they're trying to reach again, similar to this one today, but these are actually attached units. So. Uh, you know, I'm a planner, I don't always understand the markets.
I understand, you can only do so much.
You know, that's, that's where they were heading in that direction and they totally changed, so. But um. You know, with the, stay tuned with the concept planning for River Terrace because we're doing an update of the. Housing needs analysis and that, that usually tells us kind of what the markets are like out there and what types of housing that people are looking for. But I, I can guarantee you this, one that you approved tonight, those types of units, I've seen it. All over town through the last five years. Entire, in the Tigerd area, that is in huge demand. There's, those things are sold before they're done, before they're finished. We need to get wrapping up, but Darlene, you have another question?
Um, I had a comment about the River Terrace sing on the one level homes. So I toured those in, in River Terrace one and they were a million dollars. How many people want to retire and pay a million dollars for a house? That is. Pretty close, not, not close like this development, but I found them very beautiful. But I thought the price was exorbitant and they did lower their prices because they couldn't seem to, to find the market. For million dollar, single level homes. For people in the Tigerd area. I, I talked to them, we signed up, we looked because. Eventually I want to move to a single level, I have a two story. But it, it was just cost prohibitive. It was absolutely out of the ballpark, you know. That's not affordable housing in Tigerd and none of the houses out there are affordable housing for Tigerd. And, and the newer ones being built, they're, they're. Close proximity. Put your hand out the window and shake your neighbor's hand and. It's not a place, and I realize the density and, and more people, but it's not a place that I would wanna live in that. You can even have a private conversation with your deaf husband. Here, because all the neighbors are gonna hear it as well. So it's, things like that don't appeal to me and cost is another. Huge factor in River Terrace. And now the new ones are being built like close to wetlands, so um, yeah. Not for me. Anyone want my two story home newly remodeled? Here we go.
Okay. To wrap up, so.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, it was very productive. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner, you ran a tight ship today, thank you.
Oh, thank you for making the, the motions and uh.
Chucks.
And.
Oh, you kept us going, so that was helpful, thanks.
Yeah, so next time, as Commissioner Jackson mentioned, if you feel the need to talk. Feel free to talk. I feel like I was talking to the wall when nobody was answering me, but it's all right.
We didn't wanna unburden ourselves in front of those guys.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, everybody.